Good evening, the time is 6:30. We'll call the regular Trail City Board of Education to order and have Roll call me, please.
Dyke?
Yes, present.
Walker?
Here.
Yes.
May Comber?
Here.
Wintering?
Here.
All present and accounted for. Agenda item one, to approve the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections, Dr. Cox?
No changes.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
May Comber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Brisby?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item two is to welcome the visitors and have public comment. As we begin our agenda tonight, I'll explain our process for public comment. The board will hear comments from the public in conjunction with each agenda item using a structured process. As board president, I will ask for comments when we reach that item on the agenda. You will be asked to approach the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to two minutes. At this time, I invite any member of the audience to step up to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Please begin by stating your name and contact information. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to two minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak as well as allowing the board to complete the full board agenda in a timely manner. Comments from the public are limited to matters within the board's authority. Please understand that we as a board cannot discuss items not already on the agenda. Iowa's Sunshine Law prohibits us from having a discussion without the proper notice to all of the school district community that the issue would be discussed at tonight's board meeting. Also, please remember, you are making comments in a public meeting. Should you make comments, the subject of the comments considers to be inflammatory or libelous, you as an individual may be subject to legal action brought by the subject of your comments. Thank you for your support of our school district. Are there any comments from the public this evening? Let's see, where's the extra microphone?
My name is Chris Baldus. I'm a parent of five kids in the school district. Contact information, I'm at 2771 Timber Avenue, across the Mason-Dixon line, the south side of Charles City. The reason I'm here is to ask the board's help and the administration's help in beginning the process of setting up a soccer program for kids from eighth grade on through the senior years. The Y program as it's structured now goes up to seventh or eighth grade, but then there's nothing to play after that. Now, I've coached in the Y leagues, which kind of makes me want to have these kids be able to go on to something else and go to a good coach. So, that's my request. I've not been a soccer player. I played four years of college football. I played since I was a little kid. Football was my life. I don't play football anymore. I don't have the opportunity to. If I was a soccer player, and I can't play soccer now. It's a lifelong sport. As a parent, it's cheap. I like that. But you guys, I'm sure, have heard all of the pluses of having a soccer program. But I'd like to work with the administration, work with the board, try to figure out a process to figure out if and when we could get started on this. Make two minutes?
Yep, minute and a half. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item three, comments by board members and superintendent. We'll start off with Dr. Cox.
Thank you. A reminder that school board elections will be held this September, and candidates wishing to file must do so by 5:00 PM on July 30th. A staffer from the Iowa Association of School Boards contacted me today and let me know that our proposed session on advocacy has been accepted, so we will be presenting at the fall school board convention. No word yet on the session with BLDD that also was put in as a proposal. And then finally, I want to congratulate our softball team on a great season and wish our baseball team good luck in district play this Thursday. That's all.
I thought it was Friday.
Or Friday. I was told Thursday, but is it Friday? Friday. It's Friday.
I'm planning on going Friday.
All right. Good luck to the baseball boys.
Check your calendars.
One comment I have to make is I'd like to thank, on behalf of the class of 1965, I'd like to thank Gable for doing a great job giving us a tour of the middle school and the high school two weeks ago.
Very good.
How many people did you have in your class?
Forty-some. Forty-some that come to and tour.
Very good.
In fact, he got him to run out of time because he had to go to a wedding, so he unlocked all the doors here and give me the... I shut all the lights off and closed the place up when I left. In fact, when he come in here, the sirens went off because he didn't have the new code for the door on this building, and they had to call the police department and spend some time talking to them.
Oh, my goodness.
Whatever else.
Exciting.
Anyway, we closed up, and then he was going to come back that afternoon after the wedding and make sure we had him closed up right. So, I think we got all the lights off anyway.
Very good. Anything else? I'm going to just hit on that, I think I forwarded two emails to you this afternoon that I had received. One from the Senate Education Subcommittee encouraging us to contact our legislators, which of course, we're in contact with on a regular basis, encouraging us to ask the Senate and the House to return to session to override the governor's veto on education funding. I have seen that Representative Pritchard submitted his letter requesting the legislature go back into session. I'm not sure about Mary Jo, but I'm guessing she has or will. The other one was on the Iowa Association of School Boards' School Improvement Needs Assessment that Dr. Cox and I received this afternoon, and I was just sharing that information with the rest of the board so that you knew what was going on. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item four, Middle School Design Update with Gene Underwood.
I forwarded some information in your board packets through Terry on Friday. The first one I wanted to start with was the bleacher layouts and get your feedback on the options that we've presented. So, I'll just flip through them quickly and take any comments whenever you have them is fine. Option A, you can see the Charles City, the CC in the center, doing kind of a diagonal stripe to incorporate some orange, gray, and then white for the CC letters. Option B goes with a horizontal stripe with the orange in the center and then black and gray, the white letters in the center again. Option C alternates the black and orange bleacher seats and then the shadow letters in the center of this one as well. Option D is kind of a variation on the horizontal stripes, a little less in the center and a little top and bottom. And the last one is another variation of that with gray being the dominant color rather than black. If there's anything that you love or hate, I'd love to hear that tonight.
This is my favorite, E. I think this is going to look great with the design that you've come up with for the walls with the gray. That doesn't give us too much of the orange. As I said, Lorraine and I had taken a trip down to Waverly, and we had noted that the orange there is quite possibly the same as our orange, other than they may call it gold.
Correct.
And it does show black scuff marks. So, I really like this design. You were able to move...
That's correct. We added two columns of seats in the center section and made the outside sections, just one seat smaller. That way, the CC fit in the center a little bit better.
It's very attractive.
Yeah.
I prefer the other one, the one just ahead of that.
Okay, let's go to that one.
That one.
With more black.
You know, I like this one and the other one that Robin likes. This one, I think, if it were flipped with the white being the... Is that white or gray?
She's got charcoal gray, black, and Charles City orange.
Okay.
So, I think that's the gray.
Like flip the gray and the orange in the CC. I think I'd like it better, but, you know, either this one or the other one.
I vote for option C.
Okay.
Option C.
I just... It's a classic look, and I preferred that one to the others.
Which one?
That one? Yeah. It doesn't jump out at you, but I like that because of the two ends with the neat graphics that we have, or the way the painting is with the Comet Tails. Thought something a little more subdued might... It wouldn't fight with the two ends.
Right.
Could that one have a little more white incorporated into the CC? Just a little, a thin one?
A caution on white bleacher seats. I still want to emphasize that we're a rural farming community, and the people that show up at these events are wearing black soled boots, and they do step on these bleachers.
I liked it because there wasn't white. It was just the black and orange, a little bit of the gray on the letters.
Maybe what you're thinking, Jim, is maybe the gray instead of the white, perhaps.
Maybe gray. Something to accent the CC a little brighter.
So, have the orange letters with a white shadow?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Gray shadow.
Right, because right now, it's a gray shadow. I'm not sure if there's a lighter gray, because there were two colors of gray. I'm not sure if she's showing the darker one or the lighter one.
Something a little different shadowing of the CC.
That's darker on the screen than it is on this screen. So, who knows?
About you, too.
Yeah.
I don't have a preference.
Me neither.
I really...
Well, we've got a three-way tie, so Terry?
I have a question for you then, Gene.
Yes.
Can you get one more row of seats into the black on the left-hand side of the CC so that it's balanced in there instead of off-centered? Let me steal one from one of the rows of black. Yeah, another column of black in there.
I just need to move the CC over to the right one seat.
Right, then it would be two on the left.
On the other side. Needs one more row.
Yeah.
Looks like I got three on one side.
I think right now, it's an even number of seats total.
We're going to be... Then we'll end up with an odd end, so...
We either have an odd end or we take out a whole column of seats.
It's a catch 20, yeah.
Right.
It's not going to be an easy...
Then the other columns look weird.
We can play with it and see what we can come up with.
Just a question.
Yeah, I noticed that, too.
In reality, the amount of people that are going to see it folded up like this is probably fairly small, because if we're hosting a large event, they're pulled out.
Right, when you're doing cross-court play and you've got just a few rows, you'll see it more prominently.
What's that going to look like pulled out? Do you have any pictures of that?
It'll look exactly like this if you're straight on.
It'll look like this from the other side of the gym, only three-dimensional instead of two.
I don't know if I can do an interior view that shows them pulled out. I don't think we have that set up right now.
Yeah, that's all right.
But it looks like this, but a little more pulled out. I think at one point, we had talked about the aisles. Right now, I think we have them called out as just a clear finish on wood, so it would look like wood. I think Lorraine had mentioned possibly doing like black or gray on those aisles. I didn't know if you had a preference. You can do a painted finish as well.
How long do they last compared to the clear coat?
It'll be the same. I think it's the same coating. It's just one's colored and one's not, so it should last the same. We typically do the clear because that way, if you do start to wear through, you really don't notice it. When you do a darker color, as you wear through it, you'll see the wood showing underneath.
Well, maybe we should just stick with the wood then.
Stick to the clear.
You know, I think we were talking about those other colors, thinking it would hide any of the dirt. I'm not really sure what the custodians do with the bleachers after a game, if they're up there mopping, you know?
They clean up after the game.
So, they're mopping up there on the steps and everything? Okay.
I changed my shoes before I come down.
Then the clear coat would probably be fine.
If you want to stand at the door and make sure everybody else does, that's fine for the next 25 years.
Have a shoe caddy for everyone.
The vertical piece, that your heels would hit, the back of your heels would hit, that is black metal.
Okay.
It's just the walking surface that's the plywood.
That's what I indicated before. The first four or five rows, people will walk on top of the seats.
Yes.
To come down. Yes, when the bleachers are full, people will walk down on the seats. No ifs, ands, or buts about it, it just is a fact. So, that's... Just from what I've been told, is just pick things that won't, within a year or two, look like they're 10 years old.
And that's gray, black, and orange, right?
Gray, black, and orange, that's correct. And then this one is also gray, black, and orange.
Does the black... Will the black show?
Larry, do you want to come to the microphone?
Does the black show more marking than gray, just because of the darker color? That's all I want.
Well, the black will show light marks and the gray will show dark marks. So, it just depends on what people are wearing. I would say the gray would probably show more, just because the black will hide more colors.
When we were at...
So, which one do you like?
When we were at Waverly, the black still looked very nice. It did look good.
You know, as I looked at these designs, went back and looked at the walls and what the court looks like, you know, there's a lot of black on the court with that whole perimeter being black. And so, it leads me towards this one a little bit more than the previous one that is my other favorite, because it might be just too much black.
Can you give us, like you've done the other aerial views and...
Of the floor?
Could we be in the gym and see what the bleacher looks like and then pan to the wall and back to the other side bleacher?
In the future or right now?
Not right now.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, right now.
No, not right now.
Because that might really help solidify which one...
That's fine, yeah, I can do that.
Give us a 90-degree...
Give you a better idea of what the whole package looks like.
A 90-degree view where you've included one wall along with the bleachers on the floor?
Yeah.
That might help people understand, to see what I'm saying.
The more black we have in the bleachers, does that affect your lighting for the proper lumens and reflection and absorption of light, whatever? No? Okay. I really don't care. These are better than ones I've seen in the past, so any of these would be fine by me.
Well, it sounds like the last three, E, D, and C, were the favorites. Do we want to eliminate?
Yep.
B and A?
Eliminate A and B.
Okay.
By consensus.
All right, I'll see what I can do to come up with some kind of a view that shows at least two walls, you know, and the floors to get a better idea.
Gene, what's the required amount of seats between our...
It's a formula based on...
Capacity of the gym is what...
Well, the number of seats, you know, per person. You have to have this much aisle width, and then you do the math and figure out, do you want five aisles? Do you want six aisles? Do you want four aisles? You know, so there's a total aisle width that's required, and then you divide it up between each of the aisles that you have. Keeping in mind, you can't go farther than so many seats before you have to have an aisle. There's like a series of formulas. I didn't do the calculations myself on this one. Somebody on the team did, so I couldn't answer that.
And also, what would happen if the CC didn't touch?
The sides or the top?
The orange CC.
Oh, if we moved one letter over.
That's the new CC version of the logo.
Is just that, it's not intertwined?
There's one with a tail at the top and one that's just those two letters, but it's in that shape.
See what's there?
We can do just one C.
C or CC?
I will take a look at the spacing and what the total seat count is and see if we can wiggle some stuff around so visually, you don't notice that it's an even number that's trying to be centered. We'll take a look at it.
Okay. What else you got?
The other thing that I sent to you was some information on the lighting for the building. That was one thing that you had asked me for the last time I was here, a couple of weeks ago. So, I had our lighting designer that worked on the commons, the treehouse, the gather spaces, and the exterior to put together kind of a document. This is all he does is lighting and studies that he taught at the University of Illinois for 10 years, lighting design, those kinds of things. So, I asked him to put together a packet of information that kind of explained our philosophy behind the lighting in some of these specialty spaces. And then KCL did the lighting design with their very qualified staff for the remainder of the spaces within the building. But these are the principles that most lighting designers would follow and go through. Let me pull up the document here real quick. And I told David, I'm like, just like six or seven pages, you know, kind of a summary. And he's like, I can't do it. I just can't do that. So, it's a little bit longer, and I'm not going to go through all the details of it. But basically, the gist of it is you can light based on the tables and the code requirements, but that does not necessarily create the atmosphere and the environments that people desire and need, and it also doesn't provide the adaptability for the future that you may need, which we're providing throughout all of the spaces within the school. So, you can see on this slide, he's talking about adaptability and lighting controls, and that's something that we've incorporated into the design, is lighting controls for lots of different scenarios, and the ability for staff to adjust it, for daylighting to work with lighting controls, and to be able to provide lighting for multiple ages. You'll see from the table on the left, it's very tiny here, but as you age, the amount of light you need to be able to perform a task change is, it increases significantly. And so, whether you're talking about a fifth grader, an eighth grader, a teacher that's right out of college versus a senior staff member, the lighting needs that they need in a space are going to be completely different. So, you want to make sure that you have a system that can adjust to all those different There's some information here on how lighting affects people and circadian rhythms and those kinds of things. Basically, talking about on a cloudy day, you know, when you're outside and it's a cloudy day, it's kind of, it's a little depressing, a little eh. But when it's a sunny day, your energy level is lifted and you feel a lot better. Traditional low-cost lighting, this basically provides you a cloudy day inside your building. And then what we're trying to do is provide layers of light similar to what you would feel on a sunny day outside. So, trying to incorporate multiple layers of light and intensities of light. So, for example, in the gather spaces, the idea of a sunny day, we've got the cloud, the cloud idea, the light fixtures hanging down, but then we also have lights that are more utility lights that are up in the ceiling, up in the structure. And then some focused dynamic lighting. So, in the center of the gather, at the presentation space, if you will, there's some track lights so that you can have brighter lights in that location for somebody doing a presentation. So, a variety of different things going on in there. Originally, when we had clear stories, that was going to provide another layer of light. We also talked about doing sconces, but realized there's really too much going on in the space with the environmental graphics and all the casework and the doors and all of that. So, that's the intention for the gather space. In the cave spaces, this is meant to be, it's a different feel, and so the way we approached the cave is with wall grazing light and then the dimmable direct light. So, it creates more of a dim light, if you will, that is more of a cozy space, an individual reflection, or a very small group, you know, the feelings that you would get if you were in a cave. If you were in a classroom, you don't want a cave feel, because that's not the activities that you're doing in there, so we try to avoid that in those spaces. In the camp, this is meant to be more of a collaborative, small-group area, and so the idea is if you were gathered around a fire or a campfire or hearth, you're going to have more glowing light or sparkling stars. So, the fixtures that we've included in this space is a track light system with kind of a sparkle and then dimmable direct light, so that you can have a brighter space if you would like it to be brighter, but you don't have to. That can be dimmed as well. Trying to do multi-layered light, so you can turn them off and on as you need them or would like them. In the commons, there's a lot of different stuff going on in there, with potential for a lot of different uses in the commons. So, David's main focus was the treehouse and a lot of different stuff going on in there. So, because that's a very tall space, he's got some information here on your perceived, what you perceive through your eyes at your level versus what a light calculator might tell you is happening in that room. And so, he's got some diagrams that talk about focused vision, near-field vision, far-field vision, and what you're seeing based on what the lighting is in a space. He knows way more about lighting than I do, but that's the gist of it. In the treehouse, I believe we have a little more information here. We've got several different types of lighting. We've got the dynamic pendants that hang in amongst the green panels, which are the canopy, but then in addition to that, the dynamic raindrops, which are on the far right, that can change color. So, if you're having a dance, you can do something different than if you're doing a presentation, or spirit, something spirit-oriented, those kinds of things. And then the dynamic edge lighting just goes around the perimeter to just help define that platform. And those, you could have it as orange, but it also is color-changing as well. Because it's such a tall space, we've got lighting up on the ceiling, like way up high, that comes down. We've also got some wall sconces that we've added on either side of the display cases to help bring that down to a more human scale, to create that... That's what you're seeing, and when those lights are on, you think, oh, this is a well-lit space. When those are off, they're really not providing that much light, but it's giving you that perceived, this is a light space. Looking at controls for all of this, the intention is that the treehouse uses intelligent lighting controls that students can use from an iPad, so that when they're in that space, they can adjust the lighting for what the activity that they're doing or the mood that they're in. It also helps teach them about, you know, lighting and controls and systems and those kinds of things as well. So, it's meant to be interactive. For the exterior of the building, really keeping it fairly minimal, you can see at the top, we're not showing the exterior lighting, and then on the bottom, we're showing what we have planned. So, basically, talking about making the edges of the building kind of stand out, just so you have a better idea of the scale of the facility, especially on dark nights, particularly in the winter when it's a little bit harder to see. Making sure that the signage is illuminated, so you can see, we've got the building letters, the letters on the side of the building. We're not doing the monument sign right now. We're doing the monument sign in the future. So, the letters that are on the side of the building will be lit from behind with a colored light, so it'll be similar to, you've got the letters with the orange background at the front of the high school, so it'll give a similar feel to that. The overhang canopy, lighting that, that's like the wood deck, and it's like an exciting feature of the building. You want it to read from both the inside and the outside, so some uplights on that, and then some sconces to help define that structure, but really economical, not fancy fixtures, but to still create kind of that feeling of a glowing, a glowing piece of architecture. And then adding the wraps at the columns, the orange wraps at the columns, so that it says, this is the entrance. Originally, we had talked about doing a large pendant fixture over the entrance that really was more of a sculptural piece. Decided that probably didn't, wasn't what you were looking for, and we felt like this was a really good compromise that still says, this is the main entrance. It makes a statement, but it's not, it's not too much.
Want more orange lights along the top edge where A is?
More? More lights up there?
Come from the corner here to the right, up to that front corner, and then back towards the overhang.
Yeah, I mean, there's lots that we can always add.
You got your laser pointer, Jim?
No. Well, maybe.
Here, give him this.
Are you talking about right here?
He's going to... I give him my laser. He can...
Is that it, Jim? Oh, you got you.
I got one right here. From right there over to here, and then from here over to here.
Okay. Instead of just the corner elements, kind of doing more.
Yeah, that whole thing, as you come up there, really.
Don't look like a casino, though.
Well, we do want to be, yeah. Well, we do want to be, yeah. We want to be selective with where we put things.
Will, I know too, I have a feeling that our elevation from this look, if we went around that corner, would we actually be able to see that from ground level? If we went to the east to the west, along A.
So on the other side, on the other side of the building, we also have similar features.
Sure.
So really, we're kind of, from any side of the building you're on, you're going to be able to see the light going down both sides. So visually, you can see, this is the perimeter of the building. We don't want it to be like a band of orange light around it, just kind of highlight some of the main corners, was the intention.
Yep.
But we can certainly add more if we feel like there's a good place to do that. But like I said, similar stuff on the other entrance.
What's the readability of the Charles City Middle School when it's lit in orange?
I don't, I'm wondering if those are, if we can do different colors on that. We may be able to do it with just a white light as well. I'm not sure.
It's a little challenging from here, but I just wonder.
But it is just like computer rendering in the natural setting, what would it be? I'll ask David about that, if it's something that is color-changing or if it's only orange. I would think that it's color-changing.
How large will those letters be?
I'd have to look at the drawings and see what we've got them called out as.
Are those solid black letters or are they shadowed?
No, they're a letter that sets out from the face of the building. I'm not sure what the size is, but we'll make sure that they're readable. They're probably like a foot high or bigger.
Three-dimensional look then.
Right, it's three-dimensional.
Jean, is our balcony up there or did we lose the balcony?
Nope, the balcony is up here. You can see there's a band of lights around the railing to help light the edge of the balcony.
Was it the railing?
Right there.
If you enlarge.
That's the railing, okay. I was thinking it was the soffit of the roof, okay.
You gotta zoom in.
Yeah, you zoom in. See if I can zoom in.
You can even see the Charles City Community School.
All right, so this is the balcony and you can see we've got a light that goes around the railing to help define that space and kind of provide a glow when you're up there at night.
Perfect, yeah.
I think for this side of the building, I like that amount of lighting because remember, this will be pointed residentially.
Right, and so all of our site lighting will be like the zero cutoff, so it's not doing light bleed going out. And that's code requirements these days to do that.
If we decide there's something on the flip, on the other side, on the west side, that we maybe want to illuminate to make a stronger statement, maybe that would be.
For the new main entrance.
I like that lighting up there.
Yeah, it's really pretty, isn't it?
It's very pretty, yeah. All of this lighting, I'm really excited to see all of this. It really gives me a good idea of what the space, you know, it just gives us more, a better vision of what we're really going to have there besides, you know, all the colors and the graphics that we've looked at. The lighting is really so fun, especially with that treehouse, the color-changing lighting.
Right.
And.
We went through a lot of iterations on that. Danielle and I met with David several times and he just threw out a ton of ideas and we immediately knowed some and guessed some. And we've gone back and forth a lot, looking at the budget and trimming it and, you know, getting the most bang for your buck.
Yeah, and the gather lighting, I mean, that is just beautiful.
I was in a building this weekend that had new lighting and it is, I had a, instantly when I walked in the door, I looked up because I thought the ceiling was full of skylights because that's what it felt like and it felt like it was skylights. But it wasn't, it was just fluorescent light fixtures and it must have had all the new.
Is there only one source of this type, I mean, wherever you do like the cave lighting, is there only one source of that type of lighting?
No.
Or difference in quality of lighting and expense of each style?
Usually what we'll do is pick a light fixture that we think works well and then, you know, we'll base the specifications on that one fixture and then work with, between David and Jordan from KCL, to see what are equivalent fixtures to this that still meet those requirements. So it's always our intention to have at least three products and manufacturers for everything. Sometimes they're not always out there and we'll just say architect or engineer approved equivalent. And usually during the bidding process, people will submit substitution requests. I've got probably 15 on my desk right now for different things that contractors have sent in. You know, we'll review and make sure they meet the specs and then we'll add them to the list as acceptable. So it's always the intention to have multiple.
Yeah.
Yeah, for bidding.
Because it is true, you could take a ceramic fixture, wall, Menards fixture, and a high-end design lighting fixture, you put the light bulb in it, you get the same light out of each one of them. I would hope we would be in the middle somewhere, not the high, high end.
Right.
I don't want ceramic fixtures, obviously. But I don't want an electrician to come to me and say, do you know, you just paid three times more for something that could have been more in the middle and gotten the same equivalent for.
Yeah, and we've already done all that homework.
Excellent.
Now certainly during construction, you know, when we're reviewing shop drawings, sometimes contractors will say, hey, I've got this other fixture that we think would work for you. We'll take a look at it. If it still meets your needs and the design intent and it's cheaper, well, absolutely look at that stuff. You know, maybe there's a new product that we don't know about, you know, so absolutely.
Jean, one last question. How about heat from any of these lights? Are they, I don't know if they're all LED or what they are.
Most of them are LED, so it's not really a concern.
Good, perfect. I've been in some retail spaces where they've got these beautiful lighting system, but it's so hot you can't even stand to be in a store.
Right, we avoid that. I think that's all I have for my formal presentation.
Anything that we needed to take action on here this evening? Nothing that I could see other than we, by consensus eliminated A and B for the seating? And you'll work on C, D, and E? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Agenda item five is middle school contract approval. Dr. Cox, do we want to have Mr. Scheller take that?
Scott, do you want to share anything about number six?
Five.
Five, sorry.
The microphone's laying up there, yep, thank you. The two contracts that are up for approval are for SEH Yaggy and for Team Services, respectively. The contract for SEH Yaggy is really a quality control contract. The contractors in the project were all required to do their own daily field engineering work so that somebody didn't have to be out there on an hourly basis with them all the time. However, the project off, right, we wanted to make sure that there was good control in place and that the earthwork contractor and the civil engineer were in agreement with that control. And at a few points along the way, we'll want to be able to have somebody come out and just verify that we are indeed, the contractors are indeed in the right place at the right time with the right work. So that contract is basically, they will invoice on an hourly basis. The first control work is done. That took about approximately a day. The remainder of the visits should be limited to a half a day, possibly even less, because what they'll be doing from here on out pretty much is just verification. So their contract proposal to the school district is an hourly basis. If they are able to come out and make one of those trips and complete it in less than a half a day, you'll only be billed for the services that they actually incur. And we will be in communication with Jerry Mitchell or somebody from the school district as we go along so that there's, so that there's, you know, regular updates and knowledge of how we're using those services. I think they're agreeing, I think the proposal that they submitted gave a fairly close approximation of how many trips they need to make. And so I believe it also submits that they will invoice the school district directly as they go. The Team Services contract is very similar. It's a unit price services contract. They will be performing the testing and quality control services for the earthwork, the concrete, the structural steel, all the different things that we need to test along the way to make sure that you're getting the quality that is in the documents and that you deserve frankly. And their contract should have a maximum price in it, at which time they will not do any more services without approval. Estes and our team will be working on a daily basis to try to make the most efficient use of those services so that when they make a trip out, they can maybe do two things at the same time, whatever we can do to limit those costs. And they again will be invoicing the school direct.
So between these two contracts, 31, 32,000?
Is that neighborhood?
Was that included in our 18.8?
Yes.
Originally?
Yes, the 25,000 for the testing was a specific line item actually.
Okay.
And the Team Services.
We shouldn't be talking about any new business here, really.
It's all part of?
It's in there.
Okay. Well, there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of those pages and I don't remember every page or every line, probably as much as you do, that's why I'm asking.
Those are part of the soft cost section of the estimates?
Okay.
Yes, as a specific line item.
We'll make a concerted effort if we are asking you to consider anything that's outside the lines.
Okay.
To make sure you're aware of that. The last thing I want to do is be standing here asking, having you ask me why you spent that money to get it in half.
Okay.
Can we approve them with one motion or do you need to make two?
I'll refer to Terry.
I was thinking we could just do it as one motion.
Okay.
And the recommendation also includes, you know, if there's anything future that might come up that you allow the superintendent and board president to approve those rather than coming back to the board.
You're referring to small contracts such as this that have been included in soft costs or the 18.8 total package?
Right, and that are at or under 25,000.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with SEH Yaggy and with Team Services that costs were included in the soft cost. And then any other minor items that come up that the board president and the superintendent can approve without bringing it back to a board meeting?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. Agenda item five is presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Brisby?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Amendment to professional services agreement, agenda item six. This would be the amendment with Estes Construction.
Because it's in two phases rather than one, there's an amendment in front of you to reflect the fee for the construction management services. So the recommendation is to approve the amendment for professional services with Estes as presented.
Motion to approve the amendment of professional services with Estes Construction as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amendment number one, professional services with Estes Construction as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Brisby?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes, motion carried five to zero. Agenda item seven, new website presentation.
We've got a new website, our communications and community engagement position. Justin DeVore is going to share the website with you.
Good evening. Over the last little while, we've been working on a new website for this Charles City Community School District. I want to start because we do a lot of things data-driven here with the school district. I want to start with some data for you. In 2000, in December of 2014, we surveyed our stakeholders and said, you know, how would you grade our district's communication efforts? In 2013 and 14, they rated this, our communication efforts, as average 47 percent, good or very good 35 percent, or poor or very poor 17 percent. In 2014 and 15, those numbers drastically changed. The good or very good went to 66 percent, the average went to 27 percent, our poor went to seven, and our very poor bottomed out. And so one of the big things that we heard back during that survey is that many people cited our website as needing attention and they couldn't find the information that they wanted. This was your old website, lots of information over here, lots of text here. This was a picture of City Hall for a long time. We finally fixed, figured out how to fix that. And so, and then there's the bottom half with lots of information on here. This is, this is your new website. We did this in combination with feedback from students, feedback from parents, and feedback from the community and teachers. We had meetings with every building during their lunch hour if they wanted to come and say, hey, tell me what you think about the website, what do you want to see different? This is, this is what we have, we have come up with. We can make changes to this, we can, it's very nimble. These are stories up here which will, which will always be changing. Your schools are in the middle. Your district calendar was one of the things that came back as this is very positive. They liked the district calendar and we are in collaboration with other Northeast Iowa schools to use that. And then we also have a hard hat on here, hard hat area with lots of information on there about all of the construction projects that are happening or will be happening. You can access the website from any of the, any of these two addresses. You've got the old hyphen and dots and charles hyphen dot, charles hyphen city dot K-12 dot IA dot US, which is just a mouthful to get out, which why a few years ago, the district also added charlescityschools.org to this. So some of the features of the website, it complies with the style guidelines of the district. With the new logo came some style guidelines, so it complies with that. Our orange is the Comet orange. It fits on most screens without scrolling. It is student and parent-centric. And so we really focused it on what students and parents need in this. It is graphically driven instead of text-driven. The stories automatically expire. If we put something up about the first day of school, you can watch. After the first day of school is done, it's off. Whether we change it out or not, it goes away. So that information will disappear. It will go into an archive so that you can see what's there. And so if you wanted to go back and look at, oh, what's going on? If you are a new person to our district, you can go back and you can see the information that we have been putting out, but it will disappear off the front page. There's an ease of navigation with this that we trust that you have seen if you've gone on there. Things are easier to find and easier to navigate. Our schools are front and center, right there, you can, you can find them on the front page. It's, it's, it's right there. Teachers will have team pages that are ready for the fall, for K-8. So if you were curious of what's happening in third grade, then you can log on to the third grade team page and you can find out what the information that they are putting out on there. They are doing that as a team, so it's not individual. So they can do it as a group, which is really the philosophy that we have, we're adopting. We have some new content pages. We have a choose Charles City page, we have Charles City Proud, we have a hard hat area, we have the ability for you to actually go on and watch the school board meetings as well. So we link with the public access network. And so right here under district, you can watch the school board meetings and there's the seven of you. And so you can click right on there and watch that. Under Board of Education as well, that's where you'll find all of your agendas, your minutes, and your exhibits for everything. So this is, this is what your new, your new site is looking like.
What happened to the previous year's worth of meetings?
They are on there as well.
Archived?
They are archived.
It's a link down below.
Under district, under Board of Education. So here's your current agenda for right now, here's your exhibits. And to see agendas, minutes, and exhibits from the 2014-15 school year, click here and there's everything.
What about 13-14?
We decided to, we decided to do away with anything that was older than 14-15. If it's, if it's something that's necessary, we can put it, we can put it on. If it's, if it's something that's necessary, we can put it, we can put it on. We've got enough flexibility that we can, we can certainly make changes.
Justin, where is the page Choose Charles City?
Excuse me, Lauren?
The choose, the question was, where's the Choose Charles City page?
How do I find that?
So, you have under Academics, Choose Charles City.
Okay.
The site is also, each building has their own page that lists staff. It shows team pages, the photo galleries, principal's message, and content specific to that school. One of the things that you will also find is that it is mobily responsive. I would urge you to, if you have a smartphone, pull it out. It is much different than what it was before. They had a special app, it was, it was an antiquated way of doing things. This is, this is much more mobily responsive, so.
I'm not sure what was so special about that app that we were using. But, that's a little pun there. But, because, well, I tend to use the, my phone when I'm out and about or at events to look things up. And the old school website was not mobile friendly whatsoever.
No.
This website, since the first of July, is very mobile friendly.
Yes, yes, and that's one of the things that we knew from, from a design standpoint that we needed to do because more people are going mobile. I couldn't give you good statistics on who was mobile on our existing site because of the way it was set up. This way I can actually tell you, I can go in through Google Analytics and tell you, these are the amount of people that are coming to our site mobily, these are the amount of people who are coming to us on a Mac OS, Internet Explorer, or anything like that. So, we can tell you the browser that they're using and we can also tell you the desktop versus mobile and PC versus Mac.
So when I log in from an event or a game somewhere to the school website, you can, you don't know that it's me, but you, you know that a mobile device has?
A mobile device has accessed the website.
Accessed the website.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We worked with a company called School Point and this is, this is what they have said about, about working with the Charles City Community School District. And I thought that was worth, worth sharing. It is working. Go ahead.
Can I go back one slide?
Sure.
So, just to emphasize, the, the design that we have is unique to us.
No other school, the company that we worked with, we came to them and we said, "Can you do this?" They were, they fit the right price point, but, but if we did not turn, we said, "This is, this is how we want it designed." "This is what we want, this is how we want it, can you do this? Because if you can't do this, then we're not, we're not going to work with you because you can't do what we need." What, what, this company had never done a site like this. If you look at all of the things that they've done, they've never developed a site like this in this, in this manner. So, they, the, the tech that I was working with really came back and said, "Okay, I really didn't like this, I didn't like this project to start off with." She goes, "I really like this and we're probably going to start mirroring some other things off of the design that Charles City came up with." And so, we, we, we appreciate that.
That's wonderful, you know, I think that's really a credit to you, Justin, because you have a wealth of information and experience with working on websites. And it shows here in this, this website. It's, it's easy to follow and, and read, it's well organized and it's great to have a new website.
Well, I mean, more, and, and thank you very much, I appreciate, I appreciate that. I think it's excellent, I think it will be excellent for the district. One of the things that I want to point out is, it is working. This is a parent engagement that we had through the website that we used to not have because we didn't have a contact us form on the website. This is a, this is a conversation between a new parent who's moving into the district. They wanted some information from us, we got them the information. We turned, if you look at the timestamps on here, this was turned around within a half an hour. So from the time that they initially wrote into the website, we responded back with this response. And then it went to Kara Shannon for more details and that was fulfilled. And then there was, that was their response back. So I want, I want you to know that it's working. We've spent time, we've spent effort, and everything is working. What's next? We're excited that we're going to be working with the teachers to develop their team pages over the next first month of school. And so we will be, we will be doing that. And I think parents are going to be very excited with, with that aspect as well. I'm happy to take any questions.
Not a question, but a comment. There are some things that appear under multiple tabs so that if you think it should be under one area, but we've listed it a second place, we at least hit the two areas that are probably most commonly thought of.
Correct.
Correct?
So, for example, we can, in a story here, we can say, "Construction begins." And really, we know that that applies on the district page, but if you go over to the middle school page, that same story is also there. The back to school story we'll find on every page. The cornerstones of character page, however, the middle school, middle school, cornerstones of character expectations only appears on the middle school page. And so we can say, "This is important," and we can, we can put it on, as a story on every single school page. And, and we have, we have that flexibility. The other thing, and there are some, there are some, there are a lot of things about this that, that we really like. We've, there's people within the district that can put a message on and will appear on every single page as an alert. And so if we have a change of plans due to weather, we can alert it on every page. So if you're on a, if you're on a page, you will see it pop up as an alert. And so, we can, we can do that. Same thing with the, with the, I mean, with the high school here. The laptop rollout is specific to the high school, so it's only going to appear there. But the back to school is for everyone. And there's your, there's your lunch, your summer lunch program. So that, that appears on a couple of pages. And then also, like, the high school coursebook is only high school and the class of two thousand fifteen, we took pictures of every, every high school graduate. First time that we've done that in many, many years. And so those photos are available for download for those students and families.
I like the fact too, that should give parents who tend to say there's no access to reporting bullying, very easy access to reporting bullying. It's right there, very easy to fill out. Would you explain, elaborate a little bit on how that works?
One of the things that, through the conversation with this company, that they said that a lot of schools really like is there is a harassment, intimidation, and bullying report. And so this is uniform. We can, it, it streamlines the process. If you feel like you have been harassed, then you can complete this, this form here. You can specify the incident, when it happened, where it happened, the school of choice, who you are, the type of harassment, the victim's age or grade. And it, and it goes through the entire process. The nice thing about this, and I want to, I want to stress this, is once this, once you click, and you've got a recapture down here, and, I will, I want to stress this, you have to acknowledge that this information is complete, true, and accurate. If it is not, and it goes through this here, there can be criminal charges taken against the person who submitted this. With that said, once you click the submit incident report, hypothetically, it goes to one, you know, one of our, you, you click it, it goes to the principal of the building that, that you reported it to. It goes to Dr. Cox as an email. If the administrator of that building has put their cellphone number into the system, they immediately also get a text saying, "This has happened." So if it's eight o'clock at night and you, and your phone starts to go bing, 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 you know that you have something going on. You can log in, any administrator for that building can log in from home, log in from school, check the email, and it begins a time tracking as well on that. So as soon as, as that principal checks, it logs that, that principal checked for that building. They acknowledges that there's a report. If Dr. Cox logs in, he logs in, acknowledges that he read the report. And it has a tracking system and says, and will, at the end of the year, you can go back and say, "Here's the information on the harassment." And what happened with it on every single report.
Wow.
Very good.
Yeah, it's, it's, I've heard really good comments. And I think what's interesting about this is an elementary school student will easily be able to log on to this, click on their school, and find the information they need. User-friendly from our elementary students all the way up to Grandma and Grandpa. Thank you very much for your effort.
Anything else for Justin? Well done.
Thank you.
We'll like the new website. Agenda Item Eight, Local Access Cable Channel Twenty-eight E Agreement.
Want to talk about this one, Justin?
I would be happy to. The Twenty-eight E Agreement that is, that is in front of you tonight is a partnership with the City of Charles City, the Charles City Community School District, Community Vitalization, and the Charles City Area Chamber of Commerce. This is beneficial for a couple of things. One, it is a partnership that manages the Charles City Public Access Network. And it is beneficial because you actually use that money to fund your community, communications and community engagement. Just for a refresher, the school, there are, there are three elements of this, of this position. First is the school duties, including implementing a school communications plan, working with local media, external communications, community relations, website content, which you just saw, video, photography, advocacy efforts, audio and video projects, research, surveys, and everything else that you, that you see here. Really what it comes down to is this position conveys a message, messages to a, to a diverse audience. The second element of this is the Charles City Public Access Network. So the public access network is where you watch your, where these meetings and city council meetings and community programming. So PAN compliance, overseas programming, this is the channel, this is MediaCom Channel Four. So anyone who's watching right now, this presentation, this is the channel we're talking about. If you don't have MediaCom, one of the things that this commission, Broadband Telecommunications Commission established as a goal for the Public Access Network Director is to come up with a website. And so, one of the things that, that website was, was developed. So these are all the, the requirements of the second aspect of, of this job, which is the Public Access Network Director. The third element of this job is information tracking and reporting duties with the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, also known as Obamacare. And so there are duties that are, that we, that I assist Terry with and that I do for, for the district for information tracking and reporting. The website that I was talking to is charlescitypan.com. What this does is anyone who doesn't have MediaCom Channel Four can access the programming. So if you've got, if you've got DISH, you can watch a school board meeting. If you've got, if you are a, you have completely cut the cable, you can watch a city council meeting. You can watch the St. Patrick's Day Parade. You can watch the Fourth of July fireworks and the Fourth of July Parade. You can log in through the public access network to do that. Going back to the Twenty-eight E Agreement, I just wanted to stress, there were three elements to this, to this position. The Twenty-eight E Agreement continues agreement for two years. Last year it was one year, this year it is two years. The Broadband Telecommunications Commission is extremely thrilled with the quality and the amount of work that has been accomplished in the last ten and a half months with this, with this channel and with the public access network. It includes an increase for the school. So the amount that you received last year, this year is more. These funds are not tax dollars, I want to stress that. The funds that are used for this are not tax dollars. They are collected via MediaCom and specifically used for this purpose. Brad McKenzie gave me some information late today and I wanted to share this with you. He said, "Over the past year," he is a Broadband Telecommunications member, "over the past year I have been pleased to see the improvements made to the Charles City Public Access Network. The amount of programming has seen a significant increase. The ability for people not subscribing to MediaCom to watch it from their PC or mobile device is even a greater step forward. I'm excited to see where this goes over the next twelve months with the steps that have already been taken." And so that's from Brad McKenzie, who's on the Broadband Telecommunications Commission. The Twenty-eight E Agreement in front of you tonight, "For consideration of the services that the Charles City Community School District provides through the communications and community engagement, the district has compensated thirty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars this year and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and, thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven the following year." You have an additional benefit from this as the school programming that you've, that you are getting online, communicating to the public, is also skyrocketing as well with all the other programming. And I'm talking special programming like the academic awards, the homecoming parade, the Phase One groundbreaking, the class homecoming videos, the legislative update with the deaf and blind school that was held here, the school security updates that we produced, we put those on Channel Four, the talent show at Christmas time for the high school, the Martin Luther King Day observance, the prom grand march. Sarah Richards, if you haven't had an opportunity to see these, you need to go back and see these. Sarah Richards has done two TED Talks here in the library and they are phenomenal. Sports award banquet, music awards banquet, the Charles City Marching Band Performance at the North Iowa Band Festival Parade, commencement, baccalaureate, senior recognition night, and the three D Phase One Middle School video have all been programming specifically relating to the school that have been on the Charles City Public Access Network. Jim, you mentioned something really early on that, that, when I started, that the audio quality of the school board meetings needed to be improved. And we invested about fifty dollars and of public access network, those same funds, non-tax dollar funds. And we made some cords here and we patched it into the camera and we are, we are probably the, the best meeting recording audio that you, that you can find. And so.
A lot of good comments about our, our audio is so much better than it was when they first started.
Good, good, and we like to hear those. So I would urge you to continue with the agreement and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I've got a question, is it, is there any way from our new school website, does it link into this PAN? So that, let's say somebody does want to go back and watch grand march or something, or you've got a prospective family that's trying to see what's going on at Charles City Schools? I mean, you have a gallery, but to go back in and see what the, some of these events look like, is it on there?
So you can watch the school board meeting and that will take you to charlescitypan.com/schoolboard.
Okay.
And so if you, if you do a little, just, just, if you, if you, if you look around on the, on the PAN website, then what you can do is you can actually go in and go to community programming. Excuse me, videos, community programming, and this will show everything with the community. So it doesn't separate out into, it doesn't separate out into school versus?
Sure.
Anything else, but if you want to see the, the fireworks, you can click on it and in about twenty seconds after the, after the slide's done, you're going to start hearing fireworks.
The chamber should have that link too.
We have actually notified the, the city because the city was saying, "Oh, gosh, we should, we should be linking to it just like the school does."
Yeah, yeah.
And so, we said, "Well, here's your website and, and here's, and here's everything there." And you can, and so, I mean, they can, anyone can link to this. We are not, we are not, we are not holding anyone back from linking.
Perfect. Very good.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Item Number Eight, which is the Local Access Channel Cable Twenty-eight E Agreement.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Twenty-eight E Agreement with the city for local access cable as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote please.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintery?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisby?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes, motion carried five to zero.
Excuse me, I've got one more question, Justin. When it comes to the website, whose responsibility, who's overseeing that? When it comes to the website, whose responsibility, who's overseeing that the teachers keep their content current and up to date?
We'll be, we'll be working with principals. For the content of the entire website, it is everyone's responsibility, but it will primarily fall on me for the whole website as, as a whole. We, anyone can, can pop in, you can pop in and take a look at any team page. These are extremely public.
Yeah.
And so if you want to pop in and take a look, you can see that. I would, I would think that we'll probably be going to be having some conversations saying, these are what our expectations are, and then communicating that at the beginning of the year.
That's good. That's good to know, because I think as a parent, that was one of the most frustrating things with our other website is, it was, some of those teacher pages were just not current and up to date. And if, if everybody's keeping everything current, then everyone will be looking on the website then.
And it's a team effort.
Yes.
It's not just one teacher having to update their page. It's a team effort. So if, if a team member is saying, gosh, you know, I'm, I'm language arts and, and you're math, and, and we really, you haven't updated anything in, in a week then, or two weeks, then, you know, I think there'll probably be a little bit of peer pressure there as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, Board Policy 606.5A, Extended Major Trips. This was, was this in the 600 series?
It was in the 500 series, and we had to move it, and we, as we were going through the updates to the 500 series. Robin and Jim serve on the Board Policy Committee. You're the only one with the knowledge of what led to this policy being put into place. So rather than, well, we, we moved it to 600 series where it made more sense, but as we'll go forward with continued policy revisions in this coming school year, perhaps a history lesson on why we have this would be helpful for the Board Policy Committee and for all board members, knowing that some of you may change committees when we get to September. So if you give us a short history of how this came to be, that's kind of the intent for tonight.
I see here that was reviewed in May of 94, and initial adoption in June of 94. In the fall of 93, when I was first elected to the board, there was a request for a marching band trip to Florida that grew quite a bit of controversy and attention at the time. And this policy came from that whole time period of a band trip to Florida. Originally, that trip was denied, and then subsequently it was approved. You know, there were shootings, that was the timeframe, where there were people shooting randomly on the highways and interstates in Florida. There was question of safety, going out of state and going that distance. There was question of what about families and children who are on free or reduced lunches and have difficulties in raising $700, $800, $900 for a trip? Thus, there were proposals, plans put in place, you know, involving that families and children who needed assistance got to make sure that their family had the attention and the available time in any fundraiser, rather than families and, and students who didn't need, if they could financially afford it, you know, they shouldn't be taking all of the time and money from the fundraisers. The fundraisers should be spread around. I think over, so that's the history lesson of where this all came from, because there, those were the things that were, had come out when the original band trip to Florida was denied, and then subsequently that vote was overturned and it was approved, and then this policy was a result of that. The problem that I see now is with this policy, it's gone down to primarily only affecting two groups, correct?
Correct.
And that would be the band and-
German.
The German.
Yeah, we've had some other groups go on trips, not school affiliated, but the only way that the trip came to be is because an instructor talked about a possibility of a trip with his or her own students, and it was only Charles City students who went, and the meetings took place here. So they also should have been abiding by the extended major trips policy. So it's been followed only by really the band and the German group. And how do we proceed forward? Do we continue with the policy or not? And that's part of this history lesson as well.
The policy is just very difficult to maneuver for those two entities or those two groups that we ask to follow it. So, yeah, when it goes back to the Policy Committee-
Now we know the history, we'll look at it.
You know the history so that everybody can review that. The question, I guess, comes, how much control does the board need when it comes to trips? You know, if we're down to only two groups that are affected by this, why? What happens to everyone else? Like Dr. Cox said, now we've got other things happening, and they're not going under the auspices of the school, but yet they were school employees, and the meetings were held here, and the organization was all on our property by our employees, yet they didn't follow this policy. So how much control do we need? And how much, and whether or not we have control over them, I guess we have that right to have the control over them since we're the board, the question becomes, do we need control, or do we just need reporting scenarios in place so that the public and the board know that people are going on trips? And yes, everyone had a chance to raise money. And no, Johnny didn't get left home because free or reduced lunches, and they couldn't afford it, and Johnny was included in enough fundraisers, or the group that went on the trip made sure that Johnny got to go.
Well, what about the other group that, it just seems like there's only a handful of students that go, I think last year they went to Europe and-
That's what I'm talking about, that we have-
So that, that, that is, that should be operating under these guidelines as well?
Correct.
Yeah. Are they currently?
No. They currently are not?
Just the band and the German.
How about when we get to, you know, going to state and-
Those types of things would be exempt.
That's separate, okay.
Right. And the FFA is exempt under this policy.
So what, are most of these trips are out of the country trips, or what do you call it, extended? How far out of the-
Out of the state.
Out of the state.
Right.
Okay.
And somehow, you know, the FFA goes to national convention every year, and that's out of the state, but it's exempt from this policy. And I'm thinking that this policy is way outdated.
It's, it's definitely outdated, and it needs to be reviewed. And as you stated, how much authority does, should the board have, or should this be building administrative consideration? As a board member, I would like to hear reports back from these groups, and what they've done, but I, I guess that'll be for us to review in the Policy Committee as to whether or not this actually needs to come to the board for approval, or if it would be better taken care of by each principal, staff, administrative staff.
And either way, we either need to eliminate this policy or revise it.
Revise it, one or the other.
Because until we do- Or enforce it as it is.
Or enforce it as it is.
Right.
Because if we, yeah.
Who, who was, like, these trips, who's liable? I mean, is the school board or the school liable for their safety and whatever else while they're gone?
Depends. Which trips are you talking about?
Well, the other, when was it, there was somebody that was in here talking about a trip that they were, that the whole thing was all covered. I mean, the safety and everything else was all covered. I forget which group it was.
The German.
The German club, just not too long ago. But, you know, there's got to be, okay, so let's say something happens to one of these kids, they get sick over there, and they, we have big medical cause. Is the parents going to come back and sue us, or what? I mean, who's covering them? Who's, who's liable for them? The parents got to sign a liability agreement, or unliability agreement, or whatever. They weren't liable for something like that would happen?
Yeah, I can't give you that answer. I'd have to refer you to our attorney, but this is just, at least, we can't have Scott come to the Board Policy Committee, because now we have three board members.
That'd be an illegal meeting.
We'd have to just post it as a board meeting, so we may as well do it with all five of you, not knowing who might want to serve on the Policy Committee in the coming school year. Now you have a background in how this came to be, so that when the Policy Committee is wrestling with this and brings you a recommendation for policy update, at least you'll know and be able to ask questions, having more of a context.
And our, okay, and then the next question is, are these other groups that aren't using it, because there's only two left using it, is it because there's so many hoops to jump through for them to use it, that they're bypassing us, or?
And that's something we'll have, that's something that we can discuss in the Policy Committee.
I mean, if it's outdated, we better do something about either bringing it up to date or eliminate it, one or the other. I agree with that. And I'm glad to hear the history lesson, you know? But I think that's something, I don't know, we need the input from everybody, but then we need the committee to make the final decision.
I was quite surprised this, you were going through policies this last winter, right? Or spring?
Spring, yeah.
And I got an email from Dr. Cox, could you come in and explain this to me? And I'm like, oh, no. Okay. So then I finally had time to go in and explain it, and it's like, well, that makes sense, but it's way too cumbersome. We definitely need to do something, so. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, Fulbright, City of Buenos Aires School Exchange Program. This would be you, Dr. Cox.
This is. So last Tuesday, out of the blue, I was contacted by a staffer down in, in Argentina. And for those board members who were not part, well, Lorraine would know this, but for the remaining board members who weren't part of the interview process when I was hired, I spent not quite six months living in Argentina back in the early 2000s on a Fulbright Teacher Exchange, and I had also been there for a, a different program. So I know many of the staff members, and one of the longtime employees contacted me to say, hey, we've got a, an exchange program with school administrators. I know you're a school administrator now. Would you be interested? Because we are getting close to the time when the exchange is going to take place, and we are still trying to find American counterparts. So I let President Dye know that here was an opportunity. There's no cost to the school district, either for the Argentine administrator to come here, or for me to go to Argentina. Kind of laid out the, the basics, and she and I have been communicating almost daily since Wednesday of last week. I liken this to a student teaching agreement that we do with our universities as far as the school board action, that there is an Argentine administrator who is eager to come to the US and would come here to Charles City. I would make arrangements for the administrator to spend some time in our school buildings, shadowing principals, shadowing me as well, and make contact with area school districts to get a different perspective, either smaller or the urban one that I just came from. And so to have that person come up would be something that, it would just be better if the school board approved that. Then the exchange portion two, Buenos Aires, is 10 days, leaving on a Friday. Now, depending on what airport it is that they fly me out of, it could be in the morning, it could be afternoon or evening. So I potentially could still be here in the office on Friday. It's the weekend, one full week, which includes Veterans Day, so it's a day that we don't even have school. And then I've asked to be returned back home by Sunday evening, rather than Tuesday, which is what their plan was, because we have the school board convention coming up on November the 18th and 19th. The pre-conference is the 18th, and then the convention is the 19th. So it would be, I would use vacation days, not professional leave. And really, we're talking about one week of being gone with potentially a Friday to make six days. So, and again, I want to stress, there's no cost to the district. The Argentine Fulbright Commission and the government of the City of Buenos Aires are funding this, so everything is taken care of.
And we're not talking the Argentinian superintendent coming here and you going there at the same time?
No.
So just to clarify that also.
And actually, it'll be a school principal.
Okay.
I can't reveal yet today who that is. I mean, I've, I was given some names and looked at the resumes, information about them, picked one who I thought we could provide the things that that administrator was looking for when it came to innovation in school and leadership styles and operation management of school systems. So that person would come up, spend the three weeks here, and then I go down and spend probably about nine days.
Question, or not question, but comments, I guess, I'm, I'm going to ask you, is, number one is, do, will they stay in a motel? Are they going to look for a host family to entertain?
They'll actually stay with me and my wife.
You and your wife?
Yep.
All right. And then you would do the same down there, probably?
I would do the same down there, yeah. That's part of the exchange.
Well, I think it's a, a high credibility to Charles City Schools and to Dr. Cox that they even thought of you and asked, asked to participate, and, and I can't see any reason why you shouldn't participate, just for, you know.
Thank you. It'll be an exciting time. The, the government elections take place in late October, so if a candidate actually gets a majority of the vote, which they're not sure of, there'll be a, you know, a new president coming in, and that takes effect December 1st, I believe. So the month of November will be exciting for that. And if a, a new president doesn't achieve the majority, they'll have runoff elections right about the time that I'm leaving. So either way, it's going to be a pretty interesting time. And then I would get the opportunity to visit schools down there as well, meet with the Minister of Education, which would be like our US Secretary of Education, and engage in a couple of cultural activities as well.
Teach you Spanish.
And practice my Spanish again that I've kind of lost in the 10 years that I haven't been teaching.
The question before us is, then, do we have a motion to approve the Fulbright City of Buenos Aires School Exchange Program for one of their employees to be here in Charles City for a three-week period of time to job shadow Charles City Schools?
I'll make a motion to that effect.
I'll second that.
Agenda item 10 has been moved and seconded for approval. Any discussion?
Just one other comment. You know, I was, I did have a concern about the timing in relationship to the convention, because I was concerned because of our pending, you know, presentations or workshops that we may be leading, or probably we're not leading, but, you know, you and, and Justin-
But taking part in.
Probably, yes, exactly. And, and I know that you'll have it, you'll probably have it all done before you go down there, hopefully, because I'd hate to see you come back and, and, you know, burn the candle at both ends when, upon your return to try and get everything ready, because I think it was only, originally only like two days before the convention, and I thought, oh, man, that's tight.
But there is, there's internet access, and everything can be done.
Yes, exactly.
I also hate to see you cut your time short and miss an opportunity, which could be your one in, a lifetime opportunity.
Yeah.
So know that 48 hours, that 48 hours, it probably won't affect our presentation-
No.
-at the board convention, but it could greatly impact your experience. So I would recommend that you really make sure that, that cutting your visit short by those two days is not going to take anything away from that experience.
So you'd be okay if I flew back the afternoon of Monday?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, let's just get it done before you go.
Because you'll have it done before you go, anyway.
Yeah. Okay.
And we've been to these presentations before, and, and it is, they're, us as a board, we'll be there to answer, mostly to answer questions. The presentation is done.
Mm-hmm.
It, I- It, I, it's too much of a chance of a lifetime to cut it short.
Yeah, I think it's a great honor for you.
Thanks.
And again, there's no cost to the district.
No cost to the district, period.
And what Dr. Cox does with his vacation time is his business, and he's choosing to...
Except your wife won't be happy because you're going to go two more days.
No, if she stays home, she doesn't get to go.
She won't just spend your vacation time with you. Well...
Just like the spouse of the Argentine administrator is not coming. It's just the Argentine administrator, because it's really meant to be, it was a great learning experience.
Right.
So, if your wife also approves you being gone, that additional two days, I would, I would encourage you to spend the full time there with the full experience opposed to cutting it short.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other roll call vote, please?
Waring?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Lease purchase agreement for two new buses. Want to take that?
Sure. We, Jerry Mitchell, our Director of Transportation, as well as Buildings and Grounds, has done a lot of research into our busing options, and one of the newest, I won't call it a trend, because I think it's here to stay, but the newest option is a propane bus rather than a diesel bus, and there are far fewer issues with propane. The cost of a diesel versus a propane bus, basically the same. And Jerry also looked at leasing versus purchasing. We have $65,000 set aside. That's enough for us to purchase a used bus, probably two to three years old. It's also enough for us to lease two brand-new buses for each of the next three years. And as we've looked at the buses that we purchased a year ago that were gently used, one of them has turned out to be great, another one has turned out to cost us a lot of money in repairs, because you never know what you're getting with a bus that's a couple of years old. And if it was a really great bus, that school district probably wouldn't release it off the lease, they probably would have kept it. And so, his recommendation, and he met with Buildings and, or he convened a Buildings and Grounds meeting, and we talked about this at length, is that we lease two brand-new buses for three years each, and that we get propane instead of diesel. And the cost would be, the total cost is $181,627. Then, we also would need to purchase the dispensing equipment for propane that comes at a $9,800 cost from Advantage, using PEP or sales tax discretionary funds, and then leasing a tank for $12 per year. So, Scott or Jason, anything to add to that?
We spent over half an hour of our two-hour Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting just on this one topic, and it just makes sense, and we recommend that we move forward with this. We need to get out of the habit of buying used, because you never know what you're getting. We need to start buying new.
Jerry, and I don't see it in our packet, but Jerry had a great side-by-side comparison of, you know, the used or whatever, purchasing used versus the leasing, and the positives and negatives, and the positives of this far outweigh the positives of the other side and the negatives that we had. Cost of propane, you know, significantly cheaper right now than diesel. The maintenance, simple things, is how much oil the, when they do routine oil changes, the cost of that in a propane bus versus diesel bus. So, many of those things were very positive for the propane bus.
Yeah, the, the... I don't understand all the mechanics of it, but there must be way fewer quarts of oil in a propane bus than a diesel bus.
Diesel bus, yep. Bitter oil pans, yeah.
Along with that, these new ones came with warranty, whereas the ones we were buying used were not. So, if we had issues and repairs in the future, then we actually could fix those in-house, bill our mechanic's time to the warranty for that, and get reimbursed for that, so...
Can we do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, he said that was a...
You don't have to take them back to...
No, we don't have to take them anywhere. We could fix them in-house. We can bill the hourly rate for that.
Question I have is, is all our fuel for our buses bought locally? I mean, if we're out on a trip, do we have to buy diesel fuel someplace out on the road or not? And if you're going to be able to find...
If we need to, we do. If we need to, to get back, we do.
Okay, but then, are you going to be able to find LP gas?
That's an excellent question.
That's what we talked about.
Yep. The range was about 300 miles on one tank of fuel for this, and about the only trip that you can't make on a 300-mile round trip was to Des Moines and back, is what Jerry had said. And if you were going to make that trip, there's a fueling station in Dow's, I believe, and in Des Moines, so...
Okay.
Two stations in Des Moines.
For LP.
Well, you're going to be able to find fuel.
Yep, but any of the other trips, Decorah, anybody in our conference, you could easily make.
The propane, you won't have any trouble with them gelling up in the wintertime and some of them kind of things.
Correct.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right.
You don't have to plug, you don't have to plug them in at all?
No, I'm not, yeah, because I got a couple forklifts that are LP, and they start every day in the wintertime, you know, with no problem. I don't plug them in.
And if you were taking a long trip somewhere else, then we just take one of the diesel buses.
Yeah, we still have them.
Until more filling stations start popping up.
And as more schools start buying more LP buses, more filling stations will start popping up around the state.
Well, and maybe other school districts in the state, you can get fuel from them too, if you're in their area.
He checked on the contracted price now for us to get purchase, you know, our contract fuel is like 84, 85 cents a gallon for, for the LP, so, versus the almost $3 for diesel.
Is the mileage from about the same then?
Four miles to the gallon.
Versus seven.
Versus seven.
Oh, so almost, and for...
But the annual operating costs were considerably...
For the cost, we are getting a lot more miles for our $3.90.
He had that all broken out. I don't see it in our packet, but...
Like 2,300 a year savings of propane versus diesel.
Well, thanks again to Jerry for putting the effort into looking into this and giving us really good options for our district.
Detrimental thing right now is the cost of getting the pumping equipment, which, once we got it, we got it.
Right.
This is something that, you know, came out of, you know, something that he or an employee had been to a convention or a meeting of other, you know, counterparts of other districts, and is becoming a really big popular thing, and that's something that, you know, like you say, with all of our staff, those kinds of opportunities to go to these things are important, and we see the benefits in coming back to something like this.
And with the propane, you won't have to worry about, you could put that tank at the bus barn instead of having to go someplace else in town to get fuel or gas.
And that's the plan, is to put it out there.
You could use the same tank probably to, well, to help heat the building if you needed to, or whether you use city gas or LP gas.
We're probably going to be on city.
City gas, probably.
It'll take, what'd he say, four to six months before we get...
Apparently, everyone are sold before they come off the line.
Yeah, there's no stock waiting.
So, used bus that we're going to lease then won't be, will it be diesel?
No, no, we'll be leasing one.
That'll still be diesel.
We'll be leasing a brand-new one that hasn't started production.
Yeah, but then, we're going to purchase, so we're going to purchase one and buy, lease two?
No, lease two.
If we bought one, we're going to be able to purchase one, but if we lease, we could get two.
We lease two. I've got a question for you. I'm looking at this lease quote here. It says, you know, for two buses, the purchase price, the total purchase price, the annual miles, is it like renting, you know, leasing a car where you've got any type of limitation on your miles with this thing?
Not that I'm aware of. Jerry didn't mention that.
No.
Didn't mention it.
Okay.
And at the end, we have, like you said, the option to buy, or we can...
For $1.
For $1, or if we have problems with it, give it back to them, let somebody else, like we've done before, you buy used buses, somebody else can have our problem.
Yeah, really, the only negative Jerry had come up with was, and maybe Terry, we talked about the interest, you know, and the cost of, over the lease time was $5,000 worth of interest that accumulated that you wouldn't have if you bought them upfront, but the savings annually of $2,300 per bus more than outweighed that negative.
And the new... That was $5,000 per bus.
Per bus.
On the interest.
Not, not only that, and the oil, but the new diesels require special emissions control fluid.
Yeah, Jerry mentioned that.
You got to put that on, and that's expensive.
Well, Jerry said we have one bus now that cannot be operated. We have to tow it somewhere to get it updated to meet the emission standards, so it's, yeah, that's something that we...
Yeah, we can't, we can't even drive it to get the emissions fixed.
And that makes them harder to work on, too, with all that emissions control stuff.
So, is there a motion to lease purchase agreement for two new buses?
Yeah, I'm moved to approve the lease purchase agreement for two new buses.
I'll second that.
Agenda Item 11 has been moved and seconded to approve as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Financial report for June of 2015. That'd be Mrs. O'Brien. Go ahead and turn your microphone over.
The, yeah, the preliminary report for June is in. That includes all of our salary and benefit accruals. What we're waiting for and what we'll be working towards over the next month or so is finishing up accruals and making final journal entries and such. But our salary and benefits came in 1% under budget, so that's the biggest part of our budget, and although that part is pretty easy to estimate, since you know what your contracts are, there's just a few variables. Just a reminder that during July and August, your financial statements are only going to include, like, comparisons of cash and such. We aren't going to be doing a revenue expense projection. We're working on line item budgets for next year. Once those are in, then we can start doing the comparison. The CAR is due in September, and then we'll have report on that, which will be our final numbers for the year. And lastly, we have, our auditors are coming the week of October 5th, so...
They've already contacted me.
Yeah, get the emails.
Yeah, they have. So, fellow Board members, if you haven't, look for that.
Check your email.
I've seen it.
We've got questions to be answered by the 24th, I believe, is what the deadline is.
Answer them, yeah.
Send them back in.
I'm going to ask you about that.
Okay.
Motion approved the financial report for June of 2015 as presented.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the financial report. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 13, Consideration of Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Roll call vote, please.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 14, Important Upcoming Dates.
May I ask a question or two? I mean, it's not on the agenda, but can we discuss a couple things that I have brought to my attention that I'd like to have answers to?
Probably not.
Probably not. Well, it's really simple.
Can you make it in the comments?
Huh? I should have probably made it under Board Comments, but there's, people are talking about it, and I just wanted, how, where do I got to go to find the right answers to it? And what it is, is about the peanut butter situation.
Oh, that would, you would need to go to Dr. Cox.
Okay, because...
Yeah, just, we'll visit about that one.
Okay, okay, because of that.
Important upcoming dates. Meeting next week is canceled.
Right, we meet again in two weeks on the 27th. Floyd County Fair, the 22nd to the 26th. Come out and enjoy that. Bid opening is on the 28th, and then we're into August.